Okay, it being 7:30. Good evening. This is the April 7th, 2021 Town of Austin Planning Board Meeting. Let's go around the screen and introduce ourselves. Sandy?
Sandy Anelli, Secretary.
Valerie?
Valerie Manastra, Planning Consultant to the Town Planning Board.
Kathy?
Kathy Delance, Planning Board Attorney.
Gareth?
Gareth Huffam, Planning Board Member.
Dan?
Dan Cearcia, Consulting Engineer at the Planning Board.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Stevens, Planning Board Member.
Jim?
Jim Bosina, Planning Board Member.
Donna?
Donna Sharrett, Planning Board Member.
Hey, is Jesus on the screen anywhere? He hasn't shown yet?
He should be coming. He said he was coming tonight.
Right, okay.
But he's not here yet.
Okay.
If I may just say one thing, next April, okay, our next Planning Board meeting, I'm not sure I'm going to make it because I'm having cataract surgery that Monday, so I don't know what shape I'll be in in order to do this. So I just want to make sure Jesus will be here for that meeting. That's all.
Okay, that sounds great. All right, so good luck on the surgery by case anything we forget to mention it yet. Okay, so the first item on the agenda is the Rinaldi subdivision, 39 Stormy Town Road, 10 lot subdivision, final subdivision review continuing its public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. My name is Chuck Uchig. I'm with Langen Engineering representing the applicant.
Okay, have you received the notes from our planner?
I did. Yes, I did. Thank you.
Okay. Valerie, do you have any comments at this time?
Might I suggest that the applicant presents the revised site plan? There is a number of revisions to the plan from the original plan, and it might be helpful to the board as well as the public to understand the amendments that are being proposed now for the site plan.
If I could share my screen, I'd be glad to do that.
Go ahead.
So hopefully you all can now see my screen. So this was originally a 10 lot subdivision. As Valerie has indicated and we indicated in our transmitter letter, there have been some adjustments to the plan. It's now proposed as a nine lot subdivision, including the existing house to remain. The roadway configuration has stayed generally the same. The lot that got eliminated was squeezed in this location between the water course buffer, the road, some fairly steep slopes. There was a substantial underground stormwater management system located on the edge of the lot. And so we think this modification was an improvement. That lot was going to be very constrained. And we were able to create a more conventional open stormwater management practice, which handles runoff from the entire road and all of the lots in the rear portion of the property. So that's one change. The other change is, one of the comments that was lingering was a comment from your DPW and your engineering consultant, and that was the handling of the drainage system that comes off Stormy Town Road and works its way through this site, ultimately discharging into this water course. There were a couple of open pockets here, right up close to the road, that your consulting engineer and DPW superintendent felt were fairly unsafe. So what we've done is from the point at which that pave swale ends here at our road, we've enclosed that system in a piping system and pipe it all the way down to that water course. This piece of pipe from here all the way back to this dotted line exists. We simply closed up these couple of open kind of problematic spots in that system. And again, that was in response to a comment that we got from your staff in DPW. A couple of other, I think, improvements to the plan, if I could say. The original design, the first 300 feet of the road actually didn't get directed to a stormwater management practice. It discharged to this open system here and discharged directly to the water course. So the proposed stormwater management system and the roadway piping extends all the way up to this point. So all of the impervious area from the road is captured in a piping system, is directed down towards this stormwater management area. And that stormwater management area has been designed in accordance with New York State DEC criteria, including an appropriate water quality structure that's located here that replaces the required forbay in that design. And we do know that one of the comments was to deal with the point where this discharge is to. We're going to redirect it so it goes towards the water course and not towards the adjacent property. And I know that was one of the outstanding comments. The other item, and we realize there are some engineering comments, and I think we can address all of them, you know, in a response and some minor adjustments to these plans. But there are a couple that I did want to specifically point out to the board and get your reaction. So one of them is the discussion about the sidewalk. You know, this plan calls for a sidewalk along the cul-de-sac. I know there was a discussion about putting a sidewalk in along Stormy Town Road, one or the other. We're trying to understand what the board's preference is so that we can figure out how to incorporate that into the design. And then the other question was about site distance, and I know a lot of work was done relative to site distance. And our understanding is that there is a solution to each of the site distance questions, and we will provide some supplemental information with our next submission that addresses that. So that's kind of just a general overview. I will tell you that we think our plans provide a more realistic grading of the lots in order to manage the topography. We have realistic footprints. The slopes of the driveways work. So we think this plan is a much realer representation of the impact of development we'll have on this parcel. And I can run through the rest of the plans if the board would like me to, but that's generally where we're at with our, I would say, significant adjustments since the last plan that you saw.
Okay, Valerie, do you have any comments?
I had a few. Specifically, I'm starting with the SEACER procedural comments. This is clearly a new applicant, so I'm suggesting for the record, a new application needs to be submitted as part of the application record. Negative declaration was issued on the preliminary site plan back in October 2019. And so again, just to make sure the record is still consistent, the new applicant will need to confirm that the revised plan does not exceed any environmental thresholds for which the negative declaration was actually issued back in 2019. And a couple of things I wanted to just highlight, I was doing a comparison between the revised site plan as well as the prior site plan, and the revised site plan reduces the number of units, as you mentioned, from 10 lots to nine. However, now the applicant is no longer obligated to provide a Town of Austin an affordable housing unit per Section 233 of the zoning code because the trigger threshold for that is actually 10 units. The revised site plan, again, he just mentioned the sidewalks, so that it's something that the board will need to determine whether you want to have the sidewalks on Stormy Town Road as part of the revised plan. Also, just noting that the revised plan actually results in additional 104 trees that will be removed. Now, again, the applicant just noted that this revised site plan better reflects the actual conditions that are going to take place on site based upon what is needed to put the units into the overall subdivision. But again, highlighting the fact that there are additional trees that are going to come down. So that will need to be worked into any landscaping plans. And it was another thing I noted that the landscaping plans need to be better detailed and more information needs to be provided. I also raised a couple of questions dealing with the stormwater management system. More information will need to be provided as well as a new draft SWIP. The rain garden, that was of discussion of the last revised plan, has been removed from this plan so that it's something else the board might want to weigh in on whether you want that to be brought back into the overall conversation into the revised site plan. There are new retaining walls that are identified. Additional details of those would be needed. And then also dealing with the site clearance, it looks like some of the the site plan itself identifies trees, bushes to be removed and land to be cut as necessary to clear site distance for subdivision main road or other property. And based on the drawing, some of the clearing or land cutting will be required on property outside of the project site. So again, we just questioned whether this will take place in the right of way or private property and more additional information is needed. And those conclude my comments right now on the current revised plan.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quickly just respond to a couple of those because I think it's important to make sure that there's a clear understanding of what's proposed as part of our application. So one, there was a revised stormwater pollution prevention plan submitted as part of this application that fully details the stormwater management practice that's proposed. Relative to the rain garden, my understanding is that rain garden was proposed over in the area where the road drainage comes off of Stormy Town Road. And the board should understand that according to New York State DEC criteria, two things apply to rain gardens. One is they're not allowed to handle runoff from roads. And two, they're only designed to handle small areas. They're intended for roof areas on a house, things like that. So I'm not quite sure what the prior engineer had in mind. I will tell you, any idea of incorporating a rain garden in the drainage system coming from Stormy Town Road would not meet New York State DEC criteria. It's our understanding that the site distance, and in fact, I have a picture which I could share with you, but we'll provide the information requested, but the site distances have been worked out. The limits of clearing can be done within the right of way. In fact, some of it has already been done. Others of it can't be done until such time as you issue a permit because it involves grading. Tree clearing, yes, there is more, and yes, we will provide more information to the level of detail that was on the prior plans. We were taking a little different approach. I've seen how there's some flexibility when each lot is developed. We thought it was more appropriate to suggest that each lot would have a certain obligation to plant a certain number of DBH inches. But if the desire is to have a fully detailed plan, we can submit that. And then relative to SEACER in this new application, I think there's might be some confusion. The owner and applicant has not changed. The only thing that's changed is the engineering firm representing the owner and the applicant. So we'll rectify whatever inconsistencies there is, but the owner is still the owner. We are only representing, we're a new engineering firm representing the owners.
Okay. Dan, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Well, as Chuck stated, there were some changes to the plan, and I think this is a more realistic plan. We were sort of pushing against things that were just making it difficult to grade the lots out. And eliminating the one lot allowed us to have a real centralized stormwater management system. So I do have a copy of the SWIP, which we just got in a couple of days ago. So we'll, as part of our review, look at that and, you know, first glance, it looks like it all should work, but obviously we need to check the numbers. And we do, and the other big development is we actually have a plat now, which up until this point, the board had not seen.
Okay. As far as one of the points is on the sidewalks, my understanding was that the board was pretty much in favor of it being on Stormy Town Road itself, but we'll let the board members discuss that as well. Valerie, do you have anything more to add at this time? Kathy?
I just want to confirm. So back in October of 2019, the board granted preliminary subdivision approval. And the applicant was then before this board for final subdivision approval. So I just wanted to confirm that this new subdivision plat is not materially different from the preliminary plat that was approved because it may need to just grant amended preliminary subdivision approval rather than just going from final because it seems like we're missing a step. If we have a preliminary approval, the plan, the subdivision plan changed a lot from the preliminary and to go to final.
That sounds like we're going to have another meeting on this, another hearing on this at a minimum. Does the applicant have anything to respond to that?
Yes, I mean, we, I would suggest to the board that there is not a material change in the information being presented to the board. I think if we can demonstrate that we're consistent with the thresholds of your original SEACER determination, I think the system was set up to anticipate an evolution from preliminary to final. And I don't think that we have presented a plan that is materially different. So maybe self-serving from the applicant's perspective. I think our position would be that it wouldn't be a stretch for the board with appropriate responses to your staff comments to grant final subdivision approval on this based on the record and the progression of the drawings that's occurred over time.
Any other comments from the staff? Valerie?
No, none at this time. I'll review when read submissions get provided.
Okay, so going to the board itself, Jim, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Not at this time.
Okay. Carolyn, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
The only thing I would say is that I'm kind of glad to see that they're not trying to squeeze a house in, you know, that they took that one out. I think it's a much better plan in that regard. But and other than that, at this point, I'll wait and see what else happens. Thanks.
Okay. Donna, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
Yeah, I do. I am also happy to see that house go because I thought it was too much into a slope. But I have a lot of problems with this change in the stormwater management design. First of all, I think that the, a lot of those trees that are going to be removed were what was considered screening for tour view. So now that screening for tour view is going to be dramatically changed. So I hope that those people can, I hope somebody's coming from tour view to these hearings to see this because I think this is a dramatic change, putting that stormwater in there. From an environmental perspective, trees are stormwater management systems. So to remove all those trees to put this in, just to take the road water, is so illogical. I just don't, I just don't understand why you can't have stormwater systems for those houses. You know, they're going to have lawns, all that's like dead zones. I mean, I think that they're, it doesn't have to be this big on that area on a slope. I also do not agree with directing what was just stated, which just taking the discharge and directing it towards the stream because those, that road will have road salt and all kinds of chemicals on it. So all those chemicals are going to go directly towards the stream. So something has to change with that because that's just not acceptable at all. I definitely, as far as the rain garden goes, as I had stated before, I didn't, I didn't think that was a good idea just because of maintenance on a rain garden. It's very hard unless it's like a corporation that has a landscaping company. So I agree with no rain garden. So the, and then the trees that were proposed were along the road. They were all from the same genus. It's all maples, which is not a good idea in 2021 to do anything like that. So that landscape plan has to be rethought, and I definitely want to see all the landscaping. So I have two requests. One, it's, I guess, directed towards Valerie, if this would be possible, that it's a lot of trees coming down. So I'm requesting that our town tree warden would review that, the tree inventory. And the other is, I've never taken a sidewalk, so I would request the applicant, if I would be permitted to take a sidewalk at some point because I think it would help me with this process to be able to visualize it better. So if that's possible. So I think that's it for me right now.
Thanks, Donna.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just to kind of keep track of a response to comments, it may be a little easier. Just a couple of items. So this is the tree plan. These trees here, which is where the stormwater management basin are, are the trees that were coming down for that lot. So in reality, the statement that we're taking down a lot more trees in an area where we weren't is not correct. And in fact, the part of this slope that's not being disturbed before is not being disturbed now, and in fact, has no trees. That being said, we would be glad to provide some additional trees along this property edge to make sure that as good a screening as can be provided will be provided. So that's comment number one. You did not have in the prior plan an effective or conforming stormwater management system. This design with an open detention does conform. The area for road drainage has a pretreatment unit where the heavy sediments will settle out. The rest of the basin is designed as an infiltration basin with runoff reduction volume taken into consideration. And in fact, the way this current site drains, it drains towards that water course. So instead of directing a discharge somewhere where it's not going now, we intend to design this so it goes where it's supposed to go, and that is in fact, that water course. So there are some engineering principles here that override some of these statements that really aren't entirely correct.
If I may just add, I would really, may I just add one final comment? I would really like to have our tree warden go and verify because when I was at tour view, it looked like there was a lot of trees on those hills. So I would, I would like to just have this landscape plan verified. Thank you.
I think the applicant's going to allow you to be on site, Donna.
And I think. I want the tree warden. I want an expert, the town tree warden. I would like to go for a site visit, yes, but I would also like the tree warden to verify the landscape plan.
Yeah, I don't think that's a problem.
Valerie, is that normal process for us?
Well, I mean, I can reach out to the tree warden and see if he would be willing to undertake that work.
Okay.
Did it for, he did it for club fit.
Right.
First, I'd like to say that most of my comments were closely aligned with what Donna was saying. And I hear what you're saying, Chuck. I would like to see careful technical comparisons between the current plan and the old plan with respect to the trees and the runoff so that we can really compare them side by side. So you made a statement, you know, that most of the trees that we're going to be taking down for this new plan, we're going to go with the house anyway. So if we could see those side by side, perhaps in a memo comparing, that would be good. I'm going to jump around here a little bit. My preference for the sidewalk is clearly for Stormy Town Road. And getting back to this, I was very concerned when I first saw this new open pit type of stormwater plan about the screening of it, that, you know, thinking that it would be kind of unsightly, sort of industrial looking from the tour view club site. Perhaps not from anywhere else, but we've been trying to be very sensitive to the view from that historic, you know, almost iconic private club in Austin. We want to take care of the view from there. So I'd like to see, if possible, a rendering from the viewpoint of tour view of this new plan. Also, since there are new retaining walls and some retaining walls that have been moved, I wanted to point out to you, Chuck, since you weren't around for the initial discussions, that the applicant agreed that all of those walls would be done in natural stone to get a rustic look that would be compatible with the tour view and the surrounding wooded area. So that's very important. And I think that's more or less it. I too am very concerned about the loss of the screening. If I, if I had to say anything was on the top of my mind, that's it. So be, you know, please, please do everything you can and please do what you can to show us comparatively the screening before and now.
Thanks, Gareth. Sandy, is Jesus in? Sandy?
I believe he said he would be in this evening, but I don't see him here.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that there's any comments. Yeah, is there members of the public who are interested in commenting or questions? Nobody raise their hand?
I believe there's a resident, Arucci.
Okay.
They were there before.
Carolyn, yeah. Carolyn Ray.
We have a question for the next project. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
No members of the public interested in commenting at this time. Valerie, what's our next step on this?
So I think the applicant just needs to address the comments from the board as well as the comments from the consultants, and I know Dan is continuing his review on the SWIP. And then they'll revise the site plans and come back again. In the meantime, I think Kathy and I will take a look at the original documents that were provided and that were, just to make sure that if it needs to be or confirm whether or not there's enough of a change that this is going to be preliminary revision, the original preliminary site plan approval, excuse me, subdivision approval, or whether this can be considered a final subdivision approval.
So should we be revisiting this on April 21st or should we wait until May 5th on this to continue?
I think in terms of some of the housekeeping items, we can revisit that on April 21st. But the other elements, I think, we'll probably have to, you know, we'll see how long the engineer needs to include the revisions. And then we'll also have to have the tree warden go out to the site, so I'm sure they're probably not going to be ready within two weeks.
All right. So could I have a motion to the effect of adjourning this until April 21st?
So.
Who's second?
Second.
Great. Gareth, how do you vote?
Aye.
Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Good. So we'll adjourn until, I vote yes as well, so we'll adjourn until the 21st on this matter. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may ask a question just procedurally. So I think Valerie's correct. We don't, we don't want to rush a resubmission and not have addressed all of the comments. And I know that Dan's reviewing, you know, the SWIP, and I would anticipate, you know, I would hope soon we would get those comments. My point is this, as I understand what Valerie said, the purpose of the meeting on the 21st would be more of a procedural thing where her and Kathy have been able to provide a recommendation to the board about whether this needs to be preliminary again or we can stay the course on final. I think for us to submit a fully vetted responsive submission, we couldn't do a good job and be ready for April 21st. I just, I'm trying to make sure I understand the steps that you want us to follow.
Well, if you all think it will be finalized by then, we'll adjourn until May 5th.
Well, but at the same sense, I think it's important from the applicant's perspective to understand what Valerie and Kathy are going to recommend to the board. So if we can clear that procedural hurdle, that would be helpful to the applicant. So if that's an item that could be discussed.
So anything. So anything that would be discussed on the 21st would probably, should probably be before the public. So that doesn't solve your problem.
No, no. What I'm just wanting to make sure of is, what, I guess what I'm trying to say is it would be great if the procedural question that Valerie has raised is addressed on the 21st with the understanding that we would make a more formal and complete submission for your, for your subsequent meeting.
Fine. Work it out with the staff. It's not a problem. I mean, if it turns out that we can adjourn the, the public hearing on the, on the 21st, that'd be fine.
Okay, thank you.
I think the plan was all along to do procedural on the 21st.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understood.
Just going to be a little bit tough to assess whether the thresholds have been exceeded without some of your responses. So I don't know if you'll get a complete answer by the 21st without your complete submission. It's almost putting the cart before the horse.
Okay.
Just make, just make sure that you give enough notice to Sandy so she can give proper notice to the public of whether it's a real adjournment or it's, it's a real public hearing in terms of actual substantive work being done in front of the public, or it's basically going to be procedural. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, understand.
All right. The next item on the agenda is Terra Rustica Restaurante, 515 North State Road, site plan amendment, continuing the public hearing. Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant is here.
Okay. I noticed that Jesus had sent a email on this matter. Sandy, has that been posted on the website?
No, that has not been posted yet. I just received it today.
Okay. All right. So make sure that that goes on the board. I believe to paraphrase here, Jesus' comments was that he didn't see any problems with the lighting question that came up and the music question.
That's correct.
So Valerie, where do we stand on this?
This particular application, I provided the board to draft resolutions this afternoon. I apologize for the lateness on it. But so if the board wishes to move forward, you can pass both the resolutions for the ARB as well as the planning board. And I also just made note, I provided a memo just identifying that they are planning to swap out the light pole for a shorter light pole. And then they still are planning to plant the dogwood, or I think I believe it's a dogwood maple onto the site as requested by the planning board.
And that, that has been incorporated into your resolutions, draft resolution, correct?
Yeah, it's actually on the current revised site plan. So.
Great. Does the applicant have anything to add at this time?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. Planning board members, any questions or comments at this time? Donna?
So I would like to thank the applicant for lowering the pole because I'm sorry, Jesus, but I live across the street the other way and I do see that light. So perhaps when you're at the restaurant, you don't, but from my perspective, I do. So I definitely appreciate you lowering the pole to eight foot. Also Valerie, perhaps it should say a downward facing light because right now it's an eight foot light and you're asking to put the, the whatever that's called, the 3000 K or whatever. But it should be downward facing. And my other comment, it had been discussed. So I don't know if this is just not applicable to this project, but that you were going to consider putting a bike rack in. Are you still considering that? Or that would just be a separate thing? Or that would be really great with our-
Consider it. Yeah, we would consider putting in the bike rack. It's not-
Okay. Yeah, because it's just part of the, that bike trail that we have. So it'd be really fabulous. And hopefully there'd be a lot of hungry bicycle people wanting-
For some calories for sure.
Come in for, come in for lunch. Yeah. So I guess the other thing, there, there seems to be another light on the back fence, which I'm not really sure why that's there. That's, I'm wondering if you can tip that down. The one that's on the very back fence, it's like, it looks like a more, a recent addition, more recent addition. Do you know that one that I'm talking about?
Yeah, we could talk to the owner about lowering it down.
Yeah, just, just tipping it down. That would be great. And that's it. And I know the EAC had comments. So, and I think somebody from the EAC might be here, but that would be, that would be it for me. So again, I would like to thank you for addressing that issue. It's greatly appreciated. And I think it's going to be a very attractive addition to North State Road.
Thanks Donna.
Thank you.
Jim, do you have any questions, comments at this time?
Nope, I'm good with this.
Carolyn, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
No, mine, good with it.
Garret, do you have any questions or comments at this time?
I just wanted to get some clarification on which light was going to be lowered to the eight foot level. Was it the one in the, I'm looking at the plan over here, the northeast corner of the building, the one that was facing into a neighbor's property over the fence?
It's, it's by the staircase Gary. So there, there's a staircase that goes from the lower parking lot to the upper parking lot.
Right, I see that, yeah.
The owner had put in, it's about 12 foot high. So he said that, that's ridiculously high. So let's lower it down to eight feet, or possibly put some lighting directly on the staircase. But for right now, we're saying that we're going to cut that mast down to an eight foot pole. And it's going to be in the same location.
Okay. Wasn't there also a light we were talking about in that northeast corner though? That's the, in the back corner? That was, that was being seen by the neighbors and they found it quite disruptive. We were talking about-
My understanding was, was the eight, the 12 foot pole that we were-
That's the one they were talking about? Okay.
That's my understanding. If it's something different, then we'll look into, you know, lowering or tilting it or pushing it a different way, whatever it takes to appease the neighbor.
Yeah, that, that's the light that they complained about it. That's giving to their, to their house. I, I saw the light and the both, both of the light bulbs are really downward looking at the stairs and at the patio below. So I don't know how the light possibly can reflect on the other direction unless, you know, somebody put a mirror on reflecting to the other direction. Both light bulbs are looking downward. So I really don't understand that how it affects the other house.
Sorry. Has that work been done, that lowering done already or not yet?
No, it's going to be done in connection with this approval. So it has not been done yet.
All right. And regarding the facing down, as you've said you would do on Donna's request, can you, I don't know the light exactly that you're proposing, but can you make sure that it's shielded from an upward view as well? I mean, even if it's, some light bulbs, even if they're facing down, have a very wide pattern of light dispersal that can go up. If you could shield it, that would be good. That kind of shielding is common.
We understand what the issue is. And again, we're trying to do our best to accommodate the concerns, lower the light, lower the wattage, and we will do everything to keep the light focused towards the ground and not have spillage offsite and into the air.
Okay, great. And the dogwood that was mentioned, where is that going? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm a little bit hobbled because I wasn't able to get into my planning board email. So I couldn't get some of the, the information for tonight. Where is that planting going to take place?
Okay, can you see the screen right now?
Yes.
So it's right in this area here.
Oh, okay. So that is not going to be part of the screening that we talked about potentially improving between the restaurant and the homeowners, whose name I forget, that, that we're speaking at the last meeting.
That, the problem with that is there's no place to actually plant it. You have, you know, black up, blacktop up to the fence line. And then there's a fence at the property line. So putting screening there is just not going to work. And the fence is an eight foot fence already. So I don't even know how much higher we would screen anything.
One, is, is one of the homeowners online?
Yes, yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Okay. My name's Albrecht. And if you can take the picture away a minute, that drawing or something like that, you see this light? This is what we see every night, just so that you're aware of it. And it shines. And exactly like Garth, I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name correctly, had said, it does face down, but it comes out on the side. So if you do shield it, that might help it. But it has to be a lot lower than eight feet. We're still going to see it. And there are lights on the back of the building that shine also. And yes, the fence is not eight feet, the fence is six feet.
There was talk last time about possibly increasing the height of the fence as well.
That would be ideal.
Corey, I believe you said you would look into that?
Listen, I, I think we're limited by your code to a, to a six foot fence.
You said it was eight feet.
You said it was eight. Now you-
Half the fence is eight feet, half the fence is six feet. Okay, it's an existing fence.
It's an existing fence, yeah.
Yeah, it's an existing fence.
So do you think that if that fence were made eight feet, if it would be allowed by code, that that would help the problem? Or would it not really make any difference?
Don't think you, you, I want you to get above 6.5 feet. Now you, that starts becoming a structure. And then it is required to adhere to the setbacks of the building.
Okay, okay.
Well, half the fence is already eight feet and half the fence when it comes by my house goes down to six feet. So we have a fence that's, the back part where there's the woods and the parking is eight feet and it's a chain link screen fence. And where it comes right at the corner of my house and our window where we see out, it drops to six feet. And it's, it's stepped down as it goes towards North State Road, but it's still only six feet. And, and the mast on the light, yes, radiates out 180 degrees in all direction, not just down. At eight feet, we'll still see it as opposed to 12 feet. It, it needs to be directed down or make floor lighting. It's, it's really obnoxious. And if you saw what my wife showed you, every night, it's hard to see on the phone, but you can just imagine from seeing that, that's what shines. And I, I, any one of you guys can come to my house in the middle of the, you know, at night when it's dark and see what we see. Originally, it was told to Richie Zoli when he was in this original restaurant was going, he was assured that the fence surrounding the whole restaurant area would be eight feet. Not so. So I, you know, I went into the meetings when Mr. Zoli was here and what his concerns had, might have been. You know, I'm not asking for much. I, just, just a little bit of effort to try to work with us. That's all.
So I don't know what to, to say regarding the fence. If, if that wouldn't be code, wouldn't be allowed to increase the, the part that is six, six and a half feet. Valerie, I don't know. If it would help, I think it's worth trying. It's a simple fix for what is obviously, you know, a seriously irritating problem.
Right. Well, I think we also have to consider the fact that the, you know, it's an issue between neighbors here. And hopefully the restaurant is going to take that into account going forward in terms of its lighting issues. I think that at this point, unless the code allows for the fence to be that tall, it's sort of a mood issue. Unless we really want to visit this, this matter and across the board.
Could, could we postpone further discussion on this particular issue until after we see what, what it looks like at eight feet? With, I mean, maybe, maybe the problem will go away. But I don't want to say it automatically will and then not have the opportunity to ask for, you know, further shielding. Can, can you just, could we, for instance, approve one tiny little thing, part of this? Go fix the light and we'll see if it works. And if it doesn't, then we'll-
Well, I mean, we're, we're getting off a little track here, right? I mean, we came here for a 320 foot deck expansion and we're focused on this light now. We're, we're running into missing the building season before we're, you know, the weather's getting nice now. We're not going to interrupt business to close down the outdoor seating as the weather gets nice. You know, we've been asked numerous times to address the light. We're, we're doing everything that we can to, to be accommodated.
You actually could have done the light already if you really wanted to address the matter. Okay. So let's, let's not get carried away here.
And further, further that, you could have done the on step lighting, which would have solved the problem altogether. But I imagine it's more expensive and you would rather not take that approach. So you have options.
No, we do, we do want to pursue the, that lighting for the on step lighting. But you know, first we need to make sure that we're going to be able to do the porch and then deal with the mast and the, the height of the pole. But yeah, I mean, I don't think we could actually change that without a permit. So we, we thought we would do everything at the same time. So we are going to change the light. So, you know, to postpone this for another, another two weeks, you know, we'll change the light, we'll change the light.
So you're saying that you'll change it to the on step type of light?
I had written that on the plan, either, either or. So I thought the eight foot would be more easier to fix. But if it needs to be the on step lighting, then we'll put it right on the railing.
That would be really excellent.
Yeah.
We can put that, let's put that as part of the resolution and not have to, you know, revisit this again.
Okay, great. Mr. Breck, does that sound good?
Putting the light, the, the lights on the steps? Yeah.
On the steps, yeah.
Yes, that would be good.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
No, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments to the staff? Dan? Kathy?
No.
Okay. Jesus, do you have any questions or more to add?
Nope.
Okay. I don't even, Jesus, I already mentioned that you had sent an email out and Sandy's going to post it on, on the public website. Okay?
That's good.
All right. Valerie with us, next step on this?
I don't know if you want to ask if there's any more public comment.
Is there any members of the public here for this matter? Raise your hands for Sandy.
I see one person, her name is Kim.
Some of you might know me as Kim Jeffrey. I just want to say that I truly, I'll put my camera on. I truly appreciate the fact that you guys came to a resolution on this issue with Terra Rustica. They're a great asset to our community. However, we've known for a long time, there have been issues between them and the, and the neighbors. And the fact that there has been an agreement reached for both parties is really heartening to see because I think we need to help our businesses these days and we need to take into consideration our neighbors. So thank you all for that.
Thank you for that comment.
Chin, can I make a quick comment?
I, I think Marilyn's from the EAC is here also. Just if you want to Kathy, I mean, Sandy, if you see her.
Oh, hi.
I don't know if she wants to speak.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, hi. Chairman Chan and to the board as representing the EAC for the town of Austin. I would like to read into record in summary form, the letter that was provided regarding this project at Terra Rustica, if I may.
Sandy, was it published on our website? Sandy, I can't hear you. It was not?
No.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Summarize the letter, please.
Just briefly, the EAC conducted a site visit at Terra Rustica on March 6th, where they reviewed the plans for the project with the owners or managers. And a letter was drafted March 8th and sent to the board. And just in summary, the findings by the EAC, I'll read very briefly. The findings in summary was that no environmental impact based on this project. The EAC advises that the proposed construction does not appear to impact the surrounding environment. No trees will be cut down to accommodate the construction and no wetlands, streams, or their buffer zone should be affected. Additionally, there is no anticipated additional runoff from the project. In summary, the EAC recommends or suggests the use of some type of plant-based buffer such as large planters or plant boxes to provide scre- to provide screening between customers dining on the deck and the parking lot below along North State Road. The second recommendation is to have trees planted by the walkway along North State Road to further beautify the front of the property. These suggestions to enhance current landscaping were favorably received by the owner, and it was indicated that such plans are forthcoming. Now, those are the findings and the recommendations from the actual site visit. However, lastly, uh, for the record, the EAC fully supports Garrus Hoffam's recommendation to address the perch culverted stream at the southwest corner of the property to ensure conformance with the aquatic organism passage town code requirement. In summary, those are the findings and recommendations from the town of Austining Environmental Advisory Committee. Thank you for allowing me to beat that into the record.
Thank you. Uh, Sandy, could you make sure that further communications from the EAC when they submit reports like this is posted on our website?
Okay, yes.
Okay, uh, any other comments or questions from, from the board?
I would just ask, if, if, uh, is, that agreement was made between the EAC and the owner, is, uh, are they anticipating putting planters? I know that Lou had mentioned that at some point.
Planters, yeah, we were talking about putting planters on the deck to screen some of the deck, um, some of the patrons from the, from the, uh, from the deck.
Great, great. I know you had, I remember you'd said that, and, um, so I don't know, and possibly a tree next to the sidewalk, um, or is that...
The sidewalk is something that we have to make sure it's not on the right of way, that's all.
Okay.
So, that's something that we'll look into.
Okay, thanks, Lou.
And the other thing is too, you know, there's, there's a telephone pole or telephone lines there, and you, you don't wanna plant anything underneath those telephone lines, because they're gonna be cut down.
Well, anything under, that matures under 15 feet, like, uh, you know, something like that.
First, we're gonna look into the right of way, and then see what kind of trees we could plant there.
Great, thanks.
That's a great suggestion.
Okay, Valerie, could you, um, are those items already in the resolution, draft resolution?
No, they're not. So I was gonna suggest that I need, um, we, we should, you know, you can vote on the resolution, revising it, you know, based on the items that we talked about tonight, but I would like the planning board to finalize the items that you want to reflect it in the final resolution.
Okay.
There's a number of things that I believe we, that were spoken about, including, um, lights on the steps, planters on the deck, maybe a tree in the right of way. And then, um, so if we can just finalize these items that are gonna go into the final resolution. And it was tipping the light down that's back on the back fence. Right, tipping light down. Yeah, not, not changing it in any way, just changing the angle of it, so it's more downward facing.
Well, I, I think the whole, the whole lighting situation was that we were gonna, they were gonna accomplish all of the, the, uh, all of the alternatives in order to make it as, as less intrusive as possible, correct?
That's a separate light, though. It's a, it's a, it's a light on the back fence. Right. So it won't be a, a changing, you know, the fixture. It's just, um, just making it better by tipping it down.
Tipping it down, correct.
Yes, thank you, Lou. So what I'd like to...
Any other questions or comments from the members of the public? Sandy, do you see anybody?
Nope, uh, there's no part.
I would like to recommend that, I would like to recommend that as part of the condition of approval, that the applicant provides a new site plan with these items that are identified on the site plan. So that way, there's no confusion down the line as to what was agreed upon by the planning board and the applicant.
Subject to, to your approval, Valerie? Not back before the board, correct?
No, not back before the board.
Okay, thank you.
Perfect.
Like, just very quickly, uh, along the lines of what Kim was saying, uh, for the record, I wanna say that I think this is a terrific restaurant, and I look forward to coming and sitting on this new porch deck. Uh, so, uh, thank you. I just didn't wanna sound too negative, because I love this restaurant. And it's good for, good for the area, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, appreciate it.
Okay, um, so, I believe we need a motion for the resolution as amended according to our comments tonight.
Don't move.
Second.
Donna, how do you vote?
I vote yes, and just wanted us as a side, the EAC usually has their Christmas party there, so, um, we also, uh, also, also like the restaurant.
Gareth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Okay, you, um, so we don't need to have another hearing for this matter, correct, Valerie?
Nope.
Is that a vote on the ARB resolution as well?
Yes, there'll be a vote on both.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much for your time, greatly appreciated. Have a good night.
Okay, have a good night. The next item of the agenda is the Riverno, 40 Croton Dam Road, former Stony Lodge property residential development review revised scope, uh, new public hearing. Is applicant here?
He's muted.
Okay, great. Um, okay, Valerie, how do we stand on this?
So this, this application's before the board tonight. It's a public, uh, hearing on the draft scope for the supplemental, or draft supplemental environmental impact statement. Um, we asked the, um, the applicant's gonna provide a quick overview of the new proposed application before the board, as well as the scope. And just for clarification, so this, the public hearing tonight is specifically on the scoping document itself, which identifies what is being proposed to be studied as part of the supplemental environmental impact statement. So it is not necessarily, um, a public comments or a public hearing on the actual plan itself. That will take place as we continue through the process, but this is specifically dealing with the scope. And then based upon the public comments that we receive, um, the board will have a chance to take those public comments and revise the scope. And then that will become the final scope, which is basically the outline that the supplemental environmental impact statement will be based upon.
So would it be fair to say that today, tonight's meeting is only to basically describe what questions should be asked?
Yes, more, yes. Or what information that the public finds that is missing from the scoping document, that they would like to make sure that gets included in the overall analysis of the project.
Okay, and, and in effect, uh, questions or comments merely about whether they like the project or not like the project is really besides the point?
That is correct for this particular public hearing. For future public hearings, that will be very much, uh, a matter of discussion.
Right. This, the, the matter of, of whether you support or oppose the project will be something that would definitely be visited at a later time at a public hearing.
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. Uh, is there any matters on this, uh, uh, is there any matters concerning this before the town board?
Right now, the, the, it's, this project is still going through the environmental, uh, secret review, which is before this board.
Okay.
So there are no, there are no matters before the town board at this point in time. It's still review, it's still going through its secret process. And you are the lead agency, so therefore, uh, it will remain at your board until such time that the secret process concludes. That being said, the town board is an involved agency, so that they can always weigh in throughout the secret process itself.
And, and the town board is the one that's actually has the authority to make zoning that, uh, changes or not make zoning changes versus us, which we only apply whatever the town board has given us in terms of law, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Sandy, has the, uh, the draft, um, uh, document already been posted on our website, public website?
Yes, that has been posted.
Okay, how long ago has it been posted?
Uh, I would say about two week, two weeks ago.
Two weeks. Okay, and comments or questions from the public on this matter has already been posted as well?
We've only received one written comment. Um, and I believe the people are here tonight to comment.
Okay, I think I saw two emails that had come in, or is it, was it one of the, one of the ones with the, um, hard copy that you had scanned?
Uh, one email was actually addressed to the supervisor's office, but the planning board was copied. And, um, the other letter was from a resident.
Right, and those will all be posted.
Great.
And we are taking written public comments, we're also taking written public comments till April 9th as well.
Okay, and once again, uh, written comments are much more, much more efficient and effective for us to be able to review as a planning board. Okay, um, does the applicant have a comment at this time? You're muted.
Sorry. I thought you were muting me. Um, yes, I have a quick, uh, I thought it'd be simplest to give some history on the, um, scoping document, so that people who are listening in understand the genesis of it. I have a, a, can I have my screen shared, Sandy? Yes?
Yeah, you can.
And how do I do that?
Uh, at the bottom of your screen, there should be, um, an icon that says share screen.
Yep, got it. Can you see it?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so, um, the...
Can you expand?
Sure. Okay. The, um, so there was a prior scoping document. There, there's a lot of history to the scope that people need to understand. It's not a brand-new scoping document. The, basically what we're doing is we've come back with a plan that is an alternative within the prior EIS. And the prior plan is 188-unit multifamily project that we felt, uh, the boards wanted to see a different, uh, type of project. So, we have come back with an age-restricted 55-plus, um, townhouse project that is 98 units, as opposed to 188 units. And there's a very deep demand, we think, within the greater Austining community for empty nester type of housing that is professionally managed and simple. And there's also tax implications of moving from a uh, a single-family residence to a townhouse residence. The timeline of our involvement in this project began in the fall of two, of 2014, and we began our submissions, uh, that year. And we did a scoping document, which was about a seven-month process, uh, in, in, um, uh, March through July, and actually it began at the beginning of that year. Um, so that was a, a thorough process, and it included public hearings. And then we got into our several, um, iterations drafts of the EIS. And, um, these are the documents that have been submitted six different times, 20 copies every time or more circulated to interested involved agencies. Within that document is an extensive alternative section that gets into looking at the application of other residential zones within the site. And most of them were highly tax-negative, particularly the single-family ones. And that process took us a year working with the town's planner, different planner at that time. And this is a sample of a chart in that document that walked through all of the impacts of the various alternatives. One of the alternatives, which at the top is highlighted in yellow, is a townhouse alternative utilizing the existing MF zone within the town, and that's what our application does. And this is what it, it looks like based on working with your prior planning, uh, firm. And it showed 132 units, uh, that we could, um, that we could yield from that site, 132 units. The current plan, which has much more, uh, open space, we, we have tried very hard to leave the front area along Croton Dam Road open, buffers along Narragansett, buffers along, uh, the south end of Pershing, and buffers, deep buffers along Grandview to the north. And this is the 98-unit age-restricted plan. So the original doc, uh, scoping document is 18 pages, uh, included public comment, and it became the roadmap for preparing all of the EISs that have been reviewed previously by the planning board, town board, and other involved agencies like the county planning board. And so Valerie, Minestra, and Kathy uh, took that document and did a very nice job of editing it down specific to this, uh, seniors' community. And that is what's in front of all of you now, and that is the document upon which the public is being asked to add comment that may or may not be in it. Personally, I believe it's a very, very thorough document. It gets deeply into traffic, it's deeply into fiscal impacts, uh, site impacts, stormwater impacts, but still there may be concern uh, that others will want to, uh, see reviewed. Traffic is a big area. And then the one, the areas that are particular focus fiscal traffic community character, I just wanted to mention those very quickly. The proposed project will throw off somewhere around $2 million of new tax revenue. The site is currently only throwing off $98,000 of new tax revenue. Difference of almost $2 million. The multifamily rental plan, the prior plan, was gonna throw off around a million, a little bit more than a million, so there's a big improvement. And then traffic, the traffic and analysis will be, um, measured against the Stony Lodge Hospital operating. And then we believe, doing some, uh, early analysis, we believe it'll actually, um, it'll actually operate at a lesser peak evening and peak morning levels compared to the former Stony Lodge Hospital. And then numerous roads around the site have been, uh, analyzed. We've been out there four different times with our, uh, traffic crews analyzing traffic data. And then lastly, community, community character, yellow is the site, and surrounding the site to the south, to the east, to the north, um, are 5,000-square-foot lot, uh, zoning, um, districts. And then to the east, excuse me, to the west of large lot, but the bigger point is, is that the density that we're proposing for the site is actually less than the density of the surrounding, uh, areas. And that's, and that's really what I have to say.
Okay, um, are there any questions, any questions or comments from the staff at this time? Valerie?
No.
Kathy?
No.
Dan?
No, nothing, nothing at this point.
Okay, uh, are there any questions or comments from the planning board at this time? Jim?
Not at this time.
Ca- Carolyn?
No.
Donna?
Uh, no, I, I think that Valerie and Kathy did a great job on the scope, and I, uh, look forward to hearing further comments from the public.
Thanks. Jesus?
Nope, no comment. Uh, good.
Okay, Gareth?
No comment at this time.
Okay. Um, Sandy, do you see any members of the public interested in commenting or questioning at this time?
Yes, uh, first we have Kim Jeffrey, who'd like to speak.
Can we have, um, the applicant stop sharing? Unless that's needed.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, I guess it's up to the plan. Hello, hi. I guess it's, uh, better, the planning board would be better, uh, educated as to whether or not the original scoping plan, does actually speak to this new... Because if I see correctly, what the building was supposed to be was on a certain more condensed spot. It looks like the plan has the townhouses kind of spread more around. So I, I just would speak to whether or not the trees, the steep slopes and the wetlands are really being looked at and, and how that is. So I would ask that. My memory is that there was only one road going in and out at the previous plan, and I don't know whether that was ever, I don't know if that's still true. But if it is, then I would suggest that the scoping include something having to do with another egress and, and because I don't know whether or not emergency vehicles can go in and out one road, in and out, or even 98 townhouses. I, I, you know, it's just something to think about. And my last question would be about the 55 and older, which sounds great for empty nesters and for maybe impact of schools. However, we live in a society where people are having children at an older age, so I'm not quite sure that 55 necessarily means empty nesters anymore. And so I would request that there be some kind of scoping as to other townhouse or condo communities that are 55 and older in Westchester, and whether or not those communities have school age children coming out of them, because 55 does not mean necessarily retired and grandparents. Um, and, and what that looks like and have, and if they stayed 55 and older, or whether there's an ability to change over. So those are my requests and comments for now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Carol and Ray Arucci.
There we go. Hi, this is Ray Arucci. I had a couple of questions. One was kind of in regard to what Kim was saying about having another access road be, other than the one, the, the main road. There was rumors that they may want to try to break into the dead end of either Second Avenue or First Avenue. And another one that said maybe even going through to Narragansett. I did not see that on the plans, so I'm hoping that is not the case. The other thing is, we got 98 units, but they're talking about 52 cars. And the math just doesn't work out for me on that. 98 units is at least 98 cars, the way I see it, unless these people like to walk a lot. Okay? And the last thing is, are they planning on adding a lane going from the, the road there into 9A intersection? Because right now, just trying to make the turn left or, or right is, is disastrous. And with that many cars, you know, married couples, and usually married couples have two cars. I don't know that their, each family's only going to have one. So those are my three concerns, basically. They may have to add some kind of entrance lane to get onto 9A to the right somehow. I don't know. But that's it for me. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is James May.
Hi. I was looking over the SEIS, and I didn't see any mention of the invasive species that's currently on the property, Japanese knotweed. It's a tier four invasive species, a prohibited species in New York, which means that even inadvertently repopulating it or spreading it cannot happen. And I have no idea how your, how the Hudson Group is going to control and make sure this isn't spread throughout our neighborhood. Because as the last speaker noted, there was a proposal that I saw for an emergency road on Narragansett, which goes right through a stand of this pernicious species, which is actually lowered home values in certain places. So we need a very clear understanding of how the species isn't going to get spread when contaminated soil is carted off. A fingernail sized piece of the stem or root system of this can repopulate a colony. So I really need a robust discussion of that through this process.
I see, Kim, do you have your hand up again? No. Oh, okay. I don't see anyone with their hand raised.
Sandy, I'm seeing a Lino.
I see, uh, yeah. Lino Scheretta?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Chair, members of the board, town council staff, can you hear me okay?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Just briefly this evening, my name is Lino Scheretta, partner with the law firm Blakely Platt and Schmidt, on behalf of Marissa Caruso and Antonio Santucci this evening. Appreciate the opportunity to be heard tonight. And just for the record, I, I believe our letter that we submitted to the board tonight was mentioned, my letter of today, April 7th, in which the planning board was copied. And again, it was lettered to the supervisor town board, expressing some of the concerns with this process and the scoping. Ju- just a couple of points of procedure in the scoping itself. Again, my previous concerns of this project with respect to the, the density of it, the disturbance in the neighborhood was, I mean, that was the last before your board and the town board about two years ago on, on this project, and, and here we are again. So the same things that were looked at back then need to be looked at now, especially with respect to density, traffic, those concerns were looked at before. And this current applicant, now Hudson Park, decided to, I guess, forego the, the other plan of 132 units, and now we're down to 98 units of age restricted housing. Just a point of procedure, and I say this in my letter, you know, this, this process, I believe, is premature. You know, we have a comprehensive plant steering committee in this town that's right now going through discussing what the comp plan is going to look like and what it should be. So to have this process go on right now, where you have, again, we're looking at an applicant looking to rezone this site, when you have the, the interest of the town and the community need to be aligned at a comp plan. Again, I question for the record, you know, why this process is going on and why it should be paused at this point in time until the comp plan steering committee in the town can do what they're supposed to do and adopt a new comp plan. So again, those are the things that should be looked at by this board, the town board. This is a premature project. It's still way too much for this area and doesn't really fit at all. It's a multifamily project, again, surrounded by single family homes. And the scoping, while it's, it's all well and good in terms of the topics that are being discussed and looked at, it's been two years since it's been looked at, and we need a thorough review again on this particular project. So again, I thank you for the opportunity to be heard. And again, we reserve our rights to further comment to the record as further information becomes available during this process. So thank, thank you very much.
Sandy?
Glenn? Yes?
Yeah, there were some comments raised by some of the other people, and I wanted to quickly address them. There is one wetland down by Narragansett. It's a small wetland. It's about two thirds of an acre that's been identified. But we, I think it was Kim that raised it. We don't touch that wetland. We are proposing a second access, emergency access point off of a Crotton Down Road. And we're considering an emergency access point also on Narragansett. It would have a breakaway gate for fire trucks to get in the backside, but we have no primary access other than the one that currently exists for the hospital. And then there was concerns about school age children with 55 plus targeted community. And, you know, it's possible, but, you know, all of this analysis is based on the same consultant work that's done by the school district. They use a firm called Michelle Listickin out of Rutgers University, and they use them to do forward planning, and they look around all different projects that may or may not come out of the ground and do their forward planning in terms of what additional space they may or may not need. So we use the same people, we use the same criteria. And, and in this project in the fiscal section, we will, again, use that criteria. And if it shows one or two or three kids, school age kids being thrown off, maybe, but it's certainly going to be less than the 188 unit multifamily project.
Mr. Chairman, we will be taking all the comments that we receive tonight and be looking at them, and then coming back with you with a, with revised scope for your consideration.
Hey, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me?
Chang, you're, you're muted, Chang.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I just, can, I just wanted to, just on that point with, with respect to what Mr. Ventrell was talking about, I'd like the scope to also address with respect to the emergency lane that runs behind my client's property. We'd like a breakdown of how that's going to be done in a study in that regard. Also, because that also, that area used to flood, so we'd like that addressed in the scope. Is, also anything about blasting, because there is a lot of rock there at that site, so we'd like that also looked at into the scoping as well, made, made part of it. Thank you.
Again, the only things that are being addressed to this night's meeting is just the questions that are going to be asked in the scoping. Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay. Valerie, what's our next step on this?
It looks like you have one more comment that just came in.
Yeah, it just says a phone, Galaxy S9. Can, can you give your name if you want to speak?
She's muted.
Yes, could we have your name and address, please?
Here I am. Heidi Burns, 51 First Avenue, The Dead End. I want to thank you. I just want to make one brief comment. I am 56 years old. I have two grandchildren living in my home for the next five years. One of them is going to be attending the Austin schools come this September in pre-K. Therefore, I can see her probably here until she's in fourth grade, and her brother will also be here, attending the Austin schools. And, you know, I just wanted that to be made clear, just because it's a age set limit on this horrendous plan. I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not for it in any state. I, I don't want the zoning to change. Build on it, don't change the zoning. Nevertheless, I just wanted it to be heard that it's more the, the norm now, that younger grandparents have grandbabies in their homes. I appreciate you listening, and I really hope you take into consideration, this is quiet, single family. We just want it to be sustained and welcome more single families, not these units that they drop and go. It sets a precedence. So thank you. Thank you for listening. Hope all is well with everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Valerie, going back to this, at this point, we're just going to wait for a new draft of the scoping?
So, so public comment will still be taken till, be accepted by the planning board till 9:00 AM on April 9th. So once we have received all public comments, we will, we'll clearly post all public comments that we receive. Sandy will be working on the minutes to this particular meeting, and then we'll come back with a revised scope for the board's consideration. And Kathy, I believe, do they have to close the public hearing now on the scoping, or is that next meeting?
We are going to leave open the process for written comments. But you have the chance, you have the opportunity to close the public comment portion of the meeting tonight, but to leave open for written comments beyond this meeting.
Okay. Could I have a motion to that effect, that we are closing the public hearing meeting for this matter, but we will keep open for written comments to be submitted until April 9th?
Still moved.
Who's second?
Donna.
Donna?
Yes.
Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Gareth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jesus, how would you vote?
Yes.
Okay. I, Donna, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carolyn, how do you vote?
Yes.
I would vote yes as well. Okay. Thank you. I think that closes the matter for this matter, right? Valerie, anything else that needs to be done on this at this time?
No.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, members of the public with commenting office.
Thank you.
Okay. I believe that's, okay. There yet other, oh, we don't have the minutes today. All right. Are there any other matters before the board? Sandy?
Nope. I don't have anything else.
Okay. Can I have a motion to adjourn then?
I make that motion.
Okay. Second then.
Okay. Jim, how do you vote?
Yes.
Gareth, how do you vote?
Yes.
Jesus, any comments?
No comments.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
I would vote yes as well. Thank you all for attending. Have a good night.
Good night, Carolyn. Good luck, Carolyn.